Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 5th, 2017. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in regular session, we are ever mindful that we are involving ourselves in the arrival of the summer season, and we just ask that we have a safe and viable season with much enjoyment of our downtown and the rest of our community. We look forward to the coming months with the Fourth of July fireworks program, which is generally the largest event in the entire community during the entire year in which we have the biggest crowd. So, we look forward to seeing as many people as possible come together and share a sense of community in that exercise. Also tonight, as we always do, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those from our country who are serving with them as they go about their vital missions of defending their liberty. As always, we also want to ask for guidance and direction and understanding and vision as we act on the items before us on the agenda, which knowing that each and every member of the City Council here tonight is going to be voting in their best conscience to represent the best they can the citizens that elected them to office. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask City Kirk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado? Atack? Stark? Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serrone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So, let the record reflect that we have ten of the fourteen elected aldermen present in account of further savings meetings. We do have the necessary legal quorum to conduct business, and we will move forward. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. And we don't have Alderman Atack here tonight. Does somebody else? You get that, Alderman?
I got that. I know if none, Your Honor.
You have nothing?
I've got nothing.
Okay, very good. All right, moving then to Os of Office, and all these people that we're going to be talking about have all been appointed, as they should be, by the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, so we don't need any motions. We just need to have a nice ceremony for each of them to be sworn in. So, the first one, I would like to ask if she would come forward, is Elizabeth Webb, who is going to be sworn in as the new Batavia Police Officer. Do you need to join me up here in the center of the circle? Then they make me grab, take this microphone. I have to raise my right hand, and there's a lot for me to do here in this. I instate your name.
Hi, Elizabeth Webb.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer?
To the position of probationary police officer.
On March 27th, 2017?
On March 27th, 2017.
With the Batavia Police Department?
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duesam, we swear and affirm?
Duesam, we swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer?
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. All right, now, I'd like to ask our newly appointed Deputy Chief Sean Maza if he would come forward. And if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Sean Maza.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of Deputy Chief of Administration?
To the Deputy Chief of Administration.
On May 25th, 2017?
On May 25th, 2017.
With the Batavia Police Department?
The Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duesam, we swear and affirm?
Duesam, we swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Deputy Chief of Administration?
Of Deputy Chief of Administration.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Chief, you want to give an introduction to the?
I do. We have a new full-time firefighter to swear in tonight. His name is Joseph Zelik.
Joe, if you could come forward.
And he's going to have his fiancee pin on his badge for him. Fiancee is Kristen. Joe is a firefighter paramedic. He has an associate's degree in fire science, and he got his work experience in the fire service from the Dalton Fire Department.
Okay, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I instate your name?
I, Joe Zelik.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary firefighter?
To the position of probationary firefighter.
On May 25th, 2017?
On May 25th, 2017.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
The Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage?
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duesam, we swear and affirm?
Duesam, we swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary firefighter?
Of probationary firefighter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Alderman McFadden, do you have this?
I do, thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file Committee of the Whole Minutes for May 16th, 2017, March financials, and the 2017 post issuance compliance report. Approvals are as follows: The May 19th, 2017 payroll in the amount of $812,355.26 and the June 2nd, 2017 payroll in the amount of $814,181.74. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,561,413.95. The City Council minutes for March 20th and May 15th, 2017. Resolution 1764-R, authorization to purchase a self-contained leaf collection trailer from RNOW in the amount of $66,551.95. Ordinance 1733, annexing 34 West 973 Sunset Drive. Ordinance 1734, annexing 34 West 893 Chilum Drive. Ordinance 17-35, annexing 1119 Morton Street. Resolution 17-61-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2017 crack filling program with SKC Construction, Inc. for $124,173. Resolution 17-62-R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Kane County Division of Transportation for Phase II Engineering for Main Street at Deer Path intersection. This replaces Resolution 17-20-R. Resolution 17-66-R, authorizing a budget amendment for the funding of Deer Path Road Bridge Capital Engineering. Ordinance 17-38, dwelling unit separations multifamily. Resonance, Resolution 17-69-R, authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs at 423 Spring Street to Suburban General Contracting, Inc. for an amount of $22,980. And Ordinance 17-39, revising Title III and Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code, amending the video gaming provisions. Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Sabadi, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Wolf?
Aye.
Sabadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye. Motion's approved. Ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Okay, moving to item number eight, which is tonight's Main Street presentation by Executive Director Jamie Son.
All right. Um, per my little spiel here, this is Brooke, but I'll introduce her in a minute. She's going to pass around her things.
Get swayed.
Sorry. Is that your lady? I know. It's a good thing when you show up to the meetings, right? For those who aren't here, out of luck.
I wear a medium.
Um, you're up.
Medium, isn't it? Petite, thank you.
I can get extra small, Scott.
Where was this last week?
Shows off my lats.
Thank you.
Hi, Brooke. Thank you.
Ah, so, what I just passed out to you guys tonight is our shirt from this past weekend. We had our first race to market, opening day 5K. It was a super duper success. It was on Saturday, starting at 7:30. We had just over 200 racers, runners and walkers, and some vegetables and some grapes and some crazy costumes, if anybody saw any of the pictures online so far. But the feedback has been great. The weather was amazing, and it was a super fun way for us to kick off the farmer's market. So, right after that, we had the farmer's market at 8:00 AM until noon on River Street. We now have a new part-time market manager, Ms. Paula Mueller over there. So, make sure to come down to the farmer's market and see Paula every other weekend, rotating with our other market manager, Abby Beck. All of our vendors were out. The community was out in full force. You would have thought this was like the third or fourth week of the market because everyone was down there, which is exciting to see for all of our vendors coming back out. And the vendors were super excited to be back. A couple of them mentioned how nice it was to see their farmer's market family again. So, it's very cool. They commented that it's very similar to the holidays where you don't see your family all the time, but then all of a sudden you do, and it's, you know, awesome and fun to gather with everybody. So, all the vendors were sitting there and chit-chatting and excited to see their favorite customers and the other vendors. So, the day continued with our first time hosting the Well Batavia Expo. This was kind of a spin off of the Green Fair on the Fox, but with a more whole health focus. So, obviously, we started with running, local food, and then we went into a health and wellness event. So, inside here, we had a group running the Prevention Village, and that was a health screening. So, people walked to different booths, and were able to get things like cholesterol tested, nutrition testing, different fitness levels. And we actually had 75 people participate in that, which was pretty exciting, you know, not hundreds and hundreds of people, but people who actually wanted to go through this process. So, that was pretty awesome. I think the girls, the committee chairs, were hoping for 15 to 20, and so they far surpassed what they were hoping for, which was wonderful. Outside, we had vendor booths set up with different fitness, alternative health providers in the area, and all local businesses that provide different resources to the community members. We had the fitness stage, and we had seminars, health seminars also. So, that all wrapped up at 2:00, and the weather continued to be beautiful, and people continued to be everywhere in downtown Batavia. So, it was a kind of an exciting kickoff to June and the start of summer. As I mentioned briefly, Brooke is sitting in the audience, so she's our summer intern. Brooke Corbell goes to the Colorado State University, yes, Fort Collins, and will be with us throughout the summer, throughout August. So, make sure to stop down to the market to see Brooke, all of our events. You'll see her around town. She'll be focusing, like I said, on the farmer's market on Saturdays, but we're going to get her out with her video camera, interviewing some of the business owners, just to give us a little bit more of a media presence online, give the community a little insight to who are our downtown business owners. So, that's going to be a little project she's going to be working on, as well as a new promotion that we're working on, Second Fridays in downtown Batavia. So, this Friday, I'm having a really hard time with the two, because it's usually First Fridays. It's tricking me. So, Water Street Studios already does their gallery openings on Second Fridays, and thus why we picked that day. So, in partnership with them, we will be helping to encourage the downtown businesses to host different happenings, not just sales, not just their regular food and drink specials, but special happenings inside their spaces. Tea Tree is going to be doing a book signing that night. Fawn Gifts will be launching their golden social hour space upstairs. All Spoked Up has some programs planned. The Depot Museum is going to open their hours 6:00 to 9:00 on the Second Fridays, which is really exciting, because there's a lot of people in our community who don't get to experience the depot because of the limited hours. So, we think this will give families and other people in the community an opportunity to check out that space in downtown when they're down here on Fridays. So, we won't have big blow-up bouncy houses. We won't have a big band anywhere. This is just going to be our businesses in the downtown area hosting special things to encourage people to come down here, go stop at Water Street Studios, check out the new gallery opening, and then continue to walk around to the downtown businesses while they're open late on that Friday night. What else? This weekend, you guys got a flyer for this, Blues and Roots on Water Street. So, collaboration between Water Street Studios, the Fox Valley Music Foundation, Music Matters, and Batavia Main Street. We have six different musical acts performing. The headliner is Wayne Baker-Brooks, and it'll go from 4:30 until about 11:00. Food will be sold by River's Edge. The tickets are $25 apiece, and they're still on sale, but we're limited to, I think, 300, 350, something like that, in the space. So, buy them, because I know we're already in the, like, 150 or something like that. So, if you want to come to an awesome day of music in downtown, and it'll be inside, so it doesn't matter what the forecast is, which is exciting, because that never happens. We always have to pray for no rain. Get your tickets and join us over at Water Street and kiss the sky and the duck. And then, the, as I mentioned, the market started this Saturday, but from now until the end of October, we will have the market from 8:00 until noon, every Saturday morning on North River Street. The third Saturdays, we are bringing back the Artisan Collective again, which means we will go from 35 to 40 vendors every Saturday, to that third Saturday, we'll have an additional 15 to 20 vendors. So, you'll be able to not just shop the fruits and veggies and baked goods and meats and cheeses, you'll be able to shop crafts and art and all of those locally made items as well. And then we also have, you know, our friends from El Taco Grande and Bernie's Bully Dogs and Gaetano's, all doing their delicious handmade items as well. So, you're not just stuff you have to take home and prepare. You can get items to eat on the street as well. And then, for all of you guys, this Wednesday is our annual meeting. So, once a year, we host this meeting to thank board members who are leaving us. So, Kurt Hagaman has been on our board for six years, and he's officially going to be done. Yes. It's, yeah, it's after six years, everybody's like, "Okay, I'm going to walk away for a minute." But then, like this year, Rob Hollis is coming back. So, he left for a year, because they have to, according to our bylaws, and he is stepping back up to the plate to join the Main Street Board, as well as Katie Drum from the Park District and Bill McGrail, who's a Batavia resident. His wife, Jessica, is on the Chamber Board. They're very active in our community. If you don't know them, you will. So, we welcome all of you guys to join us. At 6:00 at Pell Joy's, we'll have some food, some drinks, and just go over a couple little notes about Main Street this past year, what's coming up, and then welcome those new board members on, and thank Kurt for his service with us. I want to take a minute to introduce Kathleen Tieriton. I know I probably say that right, right?
Okay.
So, Kathleen is a teacher at Batavia High School, and she's been an amazing partner to Batavia Main Street. I have her here today, because they just wrapped up, obviously. She works with the graphics and works with us on the banner program. We've done a couple different Batavia art projects, so I wanted to have her give you guys just a brief presentation, just to show one of our partnerships that spans outside of downtown that's been really a gift. It's awesome. So, Kathleen, take it away.
Good evening. So, I'm Kathleen Tieriton. I'm the graphics teacher at Batavia High School. And so, Jamie was, Jamie and Kathy were wonderful welcoming me to the Batavia community last year, because that was my last, this is my second year, just finishing up at the high school. And so, they really brought me into the community and found me ways to bring the students' work into the community, and that's something that's really important to me. So, we were really excited to do the banner program last year, and that's an every-other-year project, so we tried to come up with some fun things we could do this year. And so, I kind of skewed the curriculum to do a travel poster idea, and so you may have seen some of these in limestone. I've got a couple different fun ones. You grew up at limestone. I have my teacher voice. It's been a few weeks. And we have some different products that have been around to, so students designed all of these and then made products as well. So, we had some coffee mugs that are at Fawn or may be available at Fawn soon. And so, we just wanted to kind of share with you that the students have been, you know, thinking about Batavia, it's really fun to brainstorm what Batavia means to them, and as well as studying things like poster design history. And so, students got, you know, really into doing things that were in the style of like WPA, post-depression era design, and then 1960's concert poster design. They all kind of went different ways. So, it was really fun, and we're just finding ways to get it out there. It would be, some of the work, you know, just so stunning what they can do. These were advanced students, third and fourth year students in the program, so we'd love to see more ways to get it out into the community. If anybody has ideas and wants to reach out to us, spaces that they might, you know, provide, or places at murals and things like that could go in a rotating or more permanent basis. And just in general, any projects that can, you know, our time is limited with the students, but we're always looking for meaningful ways to take design and graphics into impacting their community, and that's really the goal of the program, for them to see it in the real world. So, that's what we do, and you're always welcome to come see us. And some of you come all the time and are great support, so thank you, Scott and Jamie and everybody. Am I forgetting anything? Yeah, yeah, if you have any questions?
Any questions? I mean, I just want to thank you for kind of an exciting program that you're putting on the streets of Batavia and, you know, kind of turning art into something that really communicates with the community. You know, we constantly have people in looking for Batavia pictures and Batavia art, and I'm pleased that maybe some of these are going to get reproduced at some point, and we can share these with other people, because like at Christmas time, we get a lot of people in, "Isn't there something Batavia I can buy to send to my brother who grew up here, and he's in Birmingham, Alabama, or wherever he may be?" And so, you get a lot of that. So, thank you for pushing forth this new idea.
And I think, and just to respond to that, you're welcome, and thank you for seeing that. And I think the students really love to know that what they learn and do has a place in the world, and that seeing, when they see it out there, like, they said the other, one of them, you know, at the end, they're like, "Oh, they switched the banners. Mine's back up. They just put mine up." And I was like, "Yeah, right, they're up." So, it's always really exciting when they know other people see what they do, and it validates a lot of what they're learning. So, thank you.
I have a quick comment. Just having been privileged to be part of a panel, to review some of the kids' work, I have to say, there are some really, really talented kids coming out of that high school program, producing some wonderful stuff. They're just awesome to see. It's awesome to see, and hopefully we can give them even more outlets to use their skills and talents.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, before you leave?
Sure.
I just, because we got you on TV here, and I'd like to get some publicity specifically for the farmer's market?
Sure.
On the, yeah, what is it, the third week of the year, you're going to have this thing go 15 more dealers than you currently have? Do you have a waiting list now of people that want to get into the?
We do. If any, if there are vendors that are interested, you can just hop onto downtownbatavia.com, and there's a drop-down menu for both the farmer's market as well as the Artisan Collective, and there's applications on both of those, so they can submit them on there. That's the best way.
Well, I was interested by what you were saying, because when we were having it at the staff level, some of the conversations that were going on about the city's acquisition of an arson and beaker property, well, one of the things, obviously, we talked about was where we were going to put the entrances. And one of the ideas was, which we went to, was to put one of the entrances up at the far, not the real north, but at least at the Spring Street intersection of that part of the riverfront. And that gives us a whole nother block in which that I think we can stage different events, and specifically, as I remember, one of the things I brought up was that we, you always have that nice car show and rally, and that one seems to always spread itself up to at least almost to that point.
Yeah.
So, I think now we've really got the opportunity, the way the design is over there at the moment, that we can easily expand, you know, everything that we're doing on River Street from Wilson up to Spring very easily, and still have access to the parking lot entrance that will be there to serve all the folks that are going to be in there, so.
Yeah, and actually, when we went out prior to the market starting, because we have to kind of measure and see how many vendors we can add, and that's kind of what put us at that number. Really, we probably could have more artisans than that. We do like to curate it a little bit, just so that the quality of the items that people are shopping are good. But, yeah, we noticed that now we can go all the way down, and that will be beneficial, especially for the car show, because we know that he likes to go as far as he can with all those cars, so it'll be very, very beneficial for us, yeah.
Well, of all the things we do here as a community, certainly the farmer's market really seems to have caught the fancy of the community into something that there seems to be very great appreciation and interest in. And I was down, I had two funerals this past weekend that I was involved in. One of them was 163 miles away, so I had to leave on Saturday after I did a quick walk through the market, and I was, quite honestly, very impressed by what I was seeing there and the volumes of people and whatever that were there. So, we really, I think, are on to something here, and it certainly, I think, for those on this council that were part of the original discussions of creating River Street, this really, I think, speaks to what we were all trying to do, at least the initial group, in trying to put that idea out there. And it really has blossomed into something that I think we all take a lot of pride and admiration in, that we were able to put that together. So, thank you and Main Street?
Yeah, thank you.
And those in your staff that are working so hard to build this thing. I'm beginning to think, you know, in a couple of years, we'll be sitting here saying, "Well, we're going to have to take this thing up to Franklin Street," you know?
Yeah, right? I think the community wouldn't mind that. They definitely enjoy seeing more and more new vendors every year, because this, as you mentioned, it's been around for a very long time. It's 22 years, which I think is really awesome, because we've, over the last two years, we've spent some time going to Illinois farmer's market conferences and meeting with some other communities that are either starting a farmer's market for the first time or have been around, and they feel seasoned at five or 10 years. And we're 22 years in, which is awesome, and it was built by volunteers initially. We've met about 20 different people who claim they started the Batavia farmer's market in the last couple of years, so I don't know who really started it, but one of those people, I bet, did. But it's, it just grows and gets stronger and stronger every year, and to see, I mean, I estimate at least 1,000 people this first time, which to me, the first of the farmer's market, I wouldn't expect that. So, it's exciting to see that many community members come down and enjoy it and want to spend their morning down there every Saturday. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the council have any comments or questions? You've got a whole group of critics and supporters sitting right here, so I'm sure on most Saturday mornings, there's at least two or three of us that I'm pretty sure are there almost every?
At least.
Were you there this past Saturday morning?
I was down there, and I commented to my wife. I said, I cannot believe for the first farmer's market of the year, and that not having the vegetable stands that you normally have as the year goes on. I could not believe how many people were there.
Yeah, and nobody even asked me where the fruit vendor was this time. I think they know now that they don't come until July. Even though we're supposedly going to have strawberries from Van Lahr next week. So get there early, because they'll sell out within like the first hour or two. And they'll be delicious.
Alderman O'Brien, were you there?
I was not.
Quite a few of, of the people sitting around this table. Always are.
Just to chime in, I was down there and I brought my kids down as well, and they had a blast.
Yeah.
A lot of the vendors are, are setting up some fun entertainment for the kids to just stop by, pass by, get little treats, trinkets, whatever. Well, for the toddlers, even all the way up to my, my oldest, my son, my thirteen-year-old, he was having fun down there, so.
That's great.
Nicely done.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, Jamie, one more thing, I made a mind. The music.
The music.
That, uh, I forget the name of the music.
Instrument exchange.
I mean, that is always such a nice thing that they do there, you know? I, I always hear comments from people on that too, that they do that.
Yeah, that was it.
It's just a charitable thing that they do. Their, their students get up there and they.
Yeah, so it's, it's, some of it is his students. He also works with some local musicians and bands. Um, and like I mentioned, with El Taco Grande, they come out, you know, and do the breakfast tacos. And um, River's Edge, she does breakfast. You know, once the season kicks off, she does breakfast. And Gaetano's is able to participate. And um, so at that point, instrument exchange, a couple of years ago, they didn't really have a, we didn't have them participating. They would open, maybe throw up a table with a couple of things out there. Uh, so we had a couple of conversations with him to see if he wanted to arrange the music. And he loves doing it. He has it booked before the market even starts for the rest of the season, and we don't even have to think about it, which is awesome. And it's a really great way for us to include another River Street business, to interact and be open and benefit from the farmer's market. So yeah, he does that, and that's, I appreciate you saying that, because I love the music down there. I think it's great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number nine. Uh, we had a memo out. I, we need to reappoint, or I need to reappoint Randy Deike to the Batavia Fire Pension Board. Uh, I asked for a motion of confirmation of this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman, s- s- old Mitser, Waitser. Uh, any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Your, um, yours right here. Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to item number ten, which is Resolution seventeen dash sixty-five dash R, authorizing Task Order Number Eleven with Trotter and Associates for Conceptual Engineering Services Related to the Realignment of the Fox River Trail at the Water Treatment Plant Facility for an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars. Alderman O'Brien?
I think this is City Council.
Yep. Um, this was, came out of our, uh, one of our field trips when we walked down to the waste treatment plant and looked at where we thought the bike path could be realigned at. This will be the preliminary engineering for that, or conceptual engineering for that. Came out of the COW meeting with a unanimous approval. And if anybody has any questions or comments, if you don't, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution seventeen dash sixty-five dash R. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Salvati for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash sixty-five dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to item number eleven, which is approval of the waived formal bidding for purchase of sewer inspection equipment from Standard Equipment Company. Alderman Wolf, you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the uh, waiver, uh, to waive formal bidding on this uh, equipment. And it would be sewer inspection equipment that replaces what we had purchased in two thousand and five. Um, we've had a lot of downtime with the current uh, equipment that we have, and we use this all the time trying to keep up with all the miles of sewer that we have. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman McFadden to waive formal bidding for the purchase of the sewer inspection equipment. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Motion is approved by a vote of ten yes, no no's, four absent. That just, we just made it, didn't we?
Just made it here.
Yeah, we had to have ten of you here to vote to waive formal bidding, or, and you all had to vote for it, or we weren't going to be doing that. Okay, moving to item number twelve, which is Resolution seventeen dash sixty-three dash R, authorizing, authorization to purchase sewer inspection equipment from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. Alderman Wolf?
This is for the actual equipment and purchase of seventy-two thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. No questions? I'll make the motion that we approve that.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the Resolution seventeen dash sixty-three dash R for the purchase of the sewer inspection equipment. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Uh, Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash sixty-three dash R is approved by a vote of ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to item thirteen, which is ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six, the TIF grant and loan for Brianna's Restaurant to ten through thirty North Island Avenue. Who's got this one? Alderman?
I've got that, Your Honor. Thank you. Uh, this is, as the mayor mentioned, it's at the ten through thirty North Island Avenue, right down here at the corner of Island and Wilson Street. Everyone's probably noticed that there's been some work being done to that corner of the building. Um, the owner, Dino Alex of Alex Group, has approached the city and has requested the TIF assistance for the grant and a low interest loan. Um, he has been working with Chris Histon, our economic development, and he is going to make a five hundred and some thousand dollar investment in that building right there with upgrades in sprinkler systems, a new facade, uh, improvements in the inside and so on and so forth. Um, the eligibility, the grant, the way the eligibility works, there are certain things that are eligible and certain things that are not. Certainly, some of the things that are eligible are, are improvements to the building that will stay with the building, such as sprinkler system, the facade improvements, electrical upgrades, items like that. Um, there's two hundred and seventy-two thousand and some dollars worth of eligible items, although what he is requesting and what staff has been working with him on is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant and a loan of twenty, seventy-five thousand dollars at an interest rate of two point seven five percent over five years. At the end of the five years, he will have paid back his seventy-five thousand dollars plus five thousand dollars roughly in interest. And hopefully, the business is a great success, but certainly, it's going to be a great improvement to that building and, and uh, certainly something I think everybody's looking forward to seeing take place. It is going to be a restaurant. It's uh, tentatively going to be called Brianna's Restaurant. That name may change from what we're told between now and when they actually open, but it will be a restaurant. And I believe they're planning on being open for a breakfast and lunch type menu. Um, they do own and operate four other restaurants in the suburban area, so they are a very well-seasoned restaurateur. And uh, that's certainly something that I see as favorable when we're considering these grants and, and loan applications, as restaurants are a very difficult business to, to operate. So it's good to see someone coming in with the experience that they have. So this went through community, or the um, committee of the whole, came out with a positive recommendation to the city council with an unanimous vote. So I move for approval of ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six.
So moved. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Serone for the approval of ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six. Any discussion? I would just piggyback onto what Alderman Brown has just said. My experience with the Alex Brothers is they've always been stand-up people. In other words, what they say they're going to do, they'll do, and they'll stand by what they're going to provide. And as you say, they do own four existing successful restaurants in other parts of the region. And I know they've talked with me, and they have a lot of excitement about the opportunities that they see here. I, I think they've got some other people in their family maybe coming into the businesses too. So they're expanding things and are very interested in seeing a successful run in Batavia, so. Uh, and for whatever reason, it's kind of like the farmer's market. I, I, I am amazed and very pleased when I go out in the early morning and see all the restaurants in town. Breakfast seems to be the meal of the day in this town. I mean, they're standing in line. I mean, there's out the doors at a lot of different places to have breakfast. So I guess, uh, you know, when you're having the breakfast, they're not playing a lot of loud music and making noise, and nine-one-one isn't ringing. So it's a good time to be in business, you know? I think, and so I appreciate what we're doing here.
I do want to make one more mention, Your Honor, just as you mentioned, River Street and how it's expanded and, and seems to be taken off the way we hoped it would. Um, I can remember the first time that Mr. Alex was, was uh, during the Streetscape planning. And he attended some of those meetings, and he was very critical over what the city had been doing or had not been doing, and very opinionated. And, and certainly, some people have been critical over maybe what he has let happen to his building over the years. And, and his comments were, and I talked to him about this, his comments were, why should I spend money? What are you guys doing in this town? And so when we talked about what we were doing with the Streetscape and what our plans were, he said, well, I'm all for it, but let's see how it works out. And obviously, now he's making quite another investment, so he thinks it's worked out pretty well. So I think it goes right along with what you were saying about the farmer's market and River Street and other areas in town, Water Street Studios. It's all, it's all coming to fruition. It's all happening.
All right. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll then on ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six.
Brown.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to item number fourteen, which is Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven dash R, pledging property tax funds for stormwater capital and maintenance. And who's got this one? Alderman O'Brien, do you have this, or?
I can, I can take it.
Wolf, you get it?
I can take it. Um, it's actually listed as community development, which I don't know why that would be on there. Um, this is for our stormwater utility or stormwater repairs, I guess, as a capital fund. Um, at this point, we're choosing to go to pledge property tax funds for that, for capital and maintenance projects. And not, haven't made the decision yet whether or not we're going to start a utility to implement that, but that we're actually going to step up and pledge real money, not just the fifty thousand dollars a year we've been doing, but really start to put together a true plan and put some money behind it. Anybody else want to chime in?
I think it's a good thing. I think, you know, it's something we, as, as a city are going to have to do. There's just too much, you know, there's a lot of flooding going on throughout the city as a whole. And, and it's a, again, it's a lifestyle issue. It's a, it's a quality of life issue for some of our residents that they're really suffering. And so I think we need to start bailing them out, so to speak, but we, we, we really should make this commitment. And I, and I would fully support it and endorse it.
Your Honor? Alderman Brown?
Comment? I just want to compliment staff and the city council for making this commitment. It's very easy when we're strapped and looking for money all the time and how we're going to fund things. It's very easy when we haven't had a flood in the last year to forget. And, you know, some of the Aldermen that are sitting here today weren't sitting here during those floods. And so for them, it'd be very easy to say, well, really, do we need to spend this money? I haven't seen it, I haven't experienced it, what have you. But there are some real issues that need to be addressed. Um, fortunately, they don't happen very often, but when they do happen, it's, it shouldn't happen. We've got the combination sewer and waters that need to be separated, that have been worked on over the years, but we decided years ago that we just couldn't see where we could come up with ten million dollars to do that, so that kind of got put on the back burner, as I'm saying. I'm, s- s- I'm very happy to see the commitment by this city council and staff to charge ahead with this and, and get it done. Because not only do we need to take care of the problem areas that we have, we need to worry about the future and the maintenance of our infrastructure that we have, that we don't have problems with today, but we will in the future if we don't maintain them. So it's very good to see.
Anybody else? Yeah, I, I want to chime in and just say, you know, this has been something that, as you say, we have always talked about, but we've never really been very real serious about it. Obviously, I think it's a necessity and something that Batavia needs to finish up and get complete. And once and for all, specifically that combined sewer such, system that we have. Fortunately, that's only in a limited number of areas in town, but where it is, it's very problematic. And it's, secondly, it's very old, because, you know, I don't think we've put one of those in for many, many years. one of those in for many, many years, probably in the early nineteen twenties was the last time we maybe did that before, you know, this is some of the early stormwater stuff that we've got in the entire town and the sewer system, is, that's where all that got combined, and so it needs to be taken care of, and it's something, I think it's an investment, as you say, that's gonna be well worth the community's commitment to it, because it'll also help some other stuff as time goes forward, as we have to kind of rebuild that sewer system and our water system in the community. If you look at the historical record of it, that John Dillon has been so ably done a great job of putting together, I mean, we're easily in a lot of it, in the older parts of town, we are now got pipes down there that have been in the ground ninety, a hundred-plus years. And, you know, we're lucky we've had them that long, but there's a lot of other issues that potentially come along with that, so as a community, we just need to kind of rejuvenate and revitalize ourselves, and while we're doing it, we need to eliminate any issues of people having to worry about their toilets or drains in the basement backing up into their houses and causing them problems every ten years or every twenty years or whatever it has been. And then we have some ground issues like over in Alderman O'Brien's ward that, you know, is ongoing there, and it doesn't seem like we've ever quite finalized the deal.
Right.
And so we need to kind of fine tune the design there. Our staff, I think, is doing a wonderful job of trying to identify all those and get them down there as to what it really is we need to do, and I think as a council, we're gonna have to probably have more discussions in the future about how we can maybe expediate some of this and maybe issue some bonds or something to, and then use the money to pay the bonds off, but I mean, there's some opportunities here, I think, to finally get this done. This is highly progressive project in Batavia that most people will never realize is going on, nor will they ever see. But at the end of the day, it's one of those future generation things that, you know, fifty years from now, there's gonna be some people very pleased that the city of Batavia did all this work. Anybody else? Kirk call the roll then on the?
We need a motion.
We need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven R, pledging property tax funds for stormwater capital and maintenance projects.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven dash R. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash sixty-seven dash R is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to fifteen, which is approval waiver of formal bidding authorizing rehabilitation of the water treatment Tonka filter cell with all services contracting corporation. Who's got this one?
That would be me.
Alderman O'Brien?
So as you said, Your Honor, in two thousand sixteen, staff realized that one of the cells was failing, and so we, in Treatment Plant One, so they're looking to replace that one for, they have an all services contracting corporation out of Decatur for a price of forty-four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. The engineer estimate was for forty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars, but the reason why it was going a little bit over was due to the fact that the engineering firm that we hired was concerned about radiation safety, because this is a highly specialized company to do this, and we've had three bids on this, and only, we asked three people to bid it, but only one company did bid it, and the other two backed away from it, and that's why we're doing the waiving the formal bid right now. So I'd make a motion that we waive formal bidding authorizing rehabilitation of the water treatment Tonka filter cell with all services contracting corporation.
Second.
I think we need a motion to waive the formal bidding, don't we, before we?
I think I just did that.
Just make the motion first to waive formal bidding.
That's what he did.
Okay. Any, moved by O'Brien and seconded by Salvati. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to sixteen, which is Resolution seventeen dash seventy-one dash R, authorizing rehabilitation of water treatment Tonka filter cell with all services contracting corporation in the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Alderman O'Brien?
I'll make the motion, we pass Resolution seventeen dash seventy-one dash R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Salvati, for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash seventy-one dash R. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash seventy-one dash R is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to seventeen, which is Resolution seventeen dash sixty-eight dash R, authorization of an agreement with Vian Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents for the two thousand seventeen water main improvement project. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, Your Honor, this is water main replacement on Hart Road between Chilum Drive and Kickapoo Avenue, water main reconfiguration replacement and service connection at North Washington and State Street, and reconfigured water service connection at Main Street and South Mallory. The bids came in, and with Vian Construction, they have, they are fourteen point seven percent less than the engineer's estimate. So I'd make the motion, we pass Resolution seventeen dash sixty-six dash R, two thousand seventeen water main improvement project approval.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash sixty-eight dash R, with the agreement with Vian Construction. Any discussion?
I just want to let everyone know that this is a budgeted item, and it is well below the budget.
Kirk call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash sixty-eight dash R is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to item number eighteen, Resolution seventeen dash seventy-two dash R, authorizing task force order number twenty-four with RJN Group Professional Engineering Services related to the First Street SSES for the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Again, our First Street lift station for the sanitary sewer basin and pipeline associated with the sewer collection system is basically gonna have some, requiring some detailed engineering investigation. So we went with RJN Group, who's worked with us in the past, they're looking to do smoke testing, they're gonna do some structural investigation of our sewer work, and basically just project manage the project itself. So I think this is a good thing to be done, so I will make a motion, pass Resolution seventeen dash seventy-two, authorizing task order number twenty-four with RJN Group Professional Engineering Services related to First Street Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Survey.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash seventy-two dash R. Any discussion?
This, again, Your Honor, is they're looking at the part of the separation of our storm and our sanitary, and making sure that we control the infiltration and infill in, you know, in the existing piping. And so they're looking to do whatever repairs they can, and, you know, first locate what the issues are. So I think this is a good thing, and again, fully support it.
Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash seventy-two dash R is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Moving to nineteen, which is approval waiver of formal bidding for authorization of an agreement with Skyline Tree Service for the East River Bank Tree Undergrowth Clearing Project adjacent to North River Street Parking Lot. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor, and you said it all right there. That is the east bank of the river that's between the river and our new parking lot on the former Larson Becker property, and this will be clearing out all the unwanted, unneeded trees and all the dead stuff that's in there.
You know, I just want to say on this, and I think I shared it all with you at the committee meeting the other night, you know, when we took our last walk, we went over there, and there was a lot of, I don't know what's the word I want to use, concern expressed about removing those, we have a couple of dead trees over there that some of our flying friends perch themselves on on a regular basis. I mean, they're almost home base for some of those folks, and given the fact that, you know, when we built the sidewalk over the river here on the east bank of the river underneath the bridge, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources came in there and inserted a fish hatchery underneath that sidewalk, so we spawned a lot of fish underneath that, and so there is a pretty good fish population, that coupled with the fact that you are immediately below the challenge dam, so fish swim up the river, as I understand it, and they get up to the dam, they can't go over the dam, so they turn around, and so that's why all these birds sit here, because between the fish hatchery and the dam, this is a great fishing spot right here. And so, you know, I kind of had a passion for trying to hold on to some of this myself, and so I called upon the expertise of our city arborist, Mr. Sopp, and personally took him over there to that site, and we got out and walked around and kicked trunks, and he put his hand into things, and it was quite an interesting exercise. We're very fortunate to have him do that for us under volunteer basis, because he's got like fifty-plus years of experience in doing stuff like this. So anyway, we get over there, and he says to me, "Jeff, if you don't cut this big tree down, and you cut everything else down," he says, "This tree will be down in about six months, because the trunk, inside the trunk, it is so rotten, that the trunk is, it's just, it's gonna go one way or another," and he says, "It's gonna depend on which direction the wind is out of, whether it goes into the Commonwealth Edison Lines to the east of it, or it falls into the river and becomes an immediate eyesore for you." So he says, "My highest recommendation is, is that you get this thing out of here, because, you know, you know, hopefully, nobody is standing near it when it decides to come down, if you leave it up." So I guess I would support the idea that we cut the tree down, but then Mr. Sopp went on to suggest that, he says, you know, "There's probably a need here to erect some types of elevated structure that the birds can sit on," and he's, you know, so I'm thinking, "Well, maybe this could be some kind of a community idea, or, you know, maybe we could ask Public Works to maybe insert a pole or two," and Mr. Sopp says, you know, "It can't be just a pole, it's gotta be a pole, probably no wires on it, but with some arms going off of it, that, you know, some higher than others and lower than others, because different birds would probably sit at different heights on it and whatever." So I guess I would hope that in the committee meetings in the next few weeks as this unfolds, maybe we need to take another walk, but we should probably try to come up with some idea and maybe ask some of our bird people in town that are real knowledgeable on this to give us some thoughts on what we can put over there that will hold interest for those birds to want to continue. Frank seems to think they'll sit there as long as there's something they can land on that doesn't electrocute them or hum at them or shoot, you know, sight at them or something, that they'll be willing to sit there, because this is a great spot right below the dam and right north of the fish hatchery, so they, he thinks we'll get the, still have the bird population there, but we gotta get something up in the air for them to sit in. So I'm just throwing that out before we vote here. Alderman Salvati?
I have, I've had a couple constituents email me and Mike about that very tree and the concern about that, and actually, Chris Cutworth posted a great article today on the site about cormorants, and you could learn everything you need to know about cormorants and what their habits, so.
So, I mean, I think as a community, you know, we try to do stuff that's of interest and educational and trying to keep some of the neat things we've got going in this town alive and well, and that's probably one of them, and I just think that we should give a little folk, I don't think we're talking about a lot of money here as much as just putting up something that will be a landing zone for them, that maybe will be even be more attractive than sitting on the dead tree that they're sitting on.
I think of something similar to what we have down on this side of the river, on the west side, the little chimney that's down there for Linnea for the, what are they, chimney swifts.
Well, Frank seems to think we need to go a little bit higher in the?
Well, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we will to get the cormorants to come back into that.
But it's, I think it's an idea that we really need to pay a little attention to. Okay, we'll get back to the motion here.
I will make the motion that we waive formal bidding for the East Bank Tree Undergrowth Clearing Project.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien, that we approve the motion to waive formal bidding for the authorization for this Skyline Tree Service to do the East River Bank. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to item twenty, which is Resolution seventeen dash seventy-four dash R, authorization of an agreement with Skyline Tree Services in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for the East River Bank Tree Undergrowth Clearing Project adjacent to the North River Street Parking Lot. Alderman Wolf or O'Brien?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution seventeen dash seventy-four dash R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of Resolution seventeen dash seventy-four dash R. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, I just want to say, this follows suit what you had done right behind the building here, clearing away the brush and the weeds and everything else, and bringing the river, giving access to the river, to the residents again. When we were doing River Street, and we had the landscape architects, you know, showing us photos of the city, they said, "You know, you wouldn't know that there's a river running through our downtown unless you're on the bridge." And so now, we're at least bringing the river to the people now and giving access to them, which I highly recommend, and so thank you for all your leadership in that, and here getting this done, taking the walk and seeing it, so I think it's important.
I would just add on to that, thank you for bringing that up. When we did that, one of the things that really rang my bell was, is that Main Street and Jamie and her group had their party in the park down there, and we had, and hopefully you're having another one, which I know you are, we have all these people come down here, and they say to me, "Goodness gracious, look at how nice this is down here, I didn't know this was here." You know, this, you know, like discovering something. And then the other thing that I got was, is that there are a lot of younger couples with small children, and then like to come down here at night, like now, and walk their kids and little babies and stuff around, and they say, "When you got a four, three- or four-year-old, they're wanting to run out there," and before we started doing that, we had just a haven of poison ivy out here and poison oak, and getting rid of all that stuff off the riverbank, I mean, I had people calling up City Hall thanking us for doing that, because their children had gotten into some of that stuff. So I think it's real imperative that, you know, once we make a commitment to this, so, you know, I'm thinking, one of the things we're gonna have to do when we cut the trees down on the east side is go after the poison ivy that's probably still well-infested in it, because that's all part of what we're trying to do here, but I'm excited by the idea that we'll have both banks now on each side of the river cleaned out, and I got my eye on this piece right south of the pedestrian bridge here on the west bank. We need, I'm even, I was home the other night going through my records, trying to find the old pictures of when that was a walking area alongside the Body Company and how nice that did look there, so I think we can, hopefully do something there someday, too. Okay, we need another, do we need another motion?
I think we have that.
We just gotta vote.
Just to call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution seventeen dash seventy-four dash R is approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to twenty-one, Resolution seventeen dash seventy dash R, authorization of a contract with Performance Construction Engineering in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand for the Area Two Storm Sewer Separation on Elm Street. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
I got another one, last one. This is the Area Two Storm Water, or Storm Sewer Separation Project, this is the beginning of it coming back off of thirty-one down Elm Street. At one point, we will have Route thirty-one taken down to two lanes to be able to accomplish this work, and then that will also extend down Elm Street, I believe, the three and four-hundred block of Elm Street. So that's what this project is, and this is one of the areas that we identified that we really needed to get this done in, and this is really the beginning of it, and also to tie in with the Main Street reconstruction, so that we're ready for the changes that'll happen when we do that.
Alderman Brown?
I just want to comment, we're talking an awful lot about all the things we're doing here, and I guess that's a good thing to do, but as Alderman Wolf just kind of alluded to, with the resurfacing that's gonna happen on Route thirty-one, with getting this done before that, we're able to save some money that we wouldn't otherwise be able to save if we didn't time this properly. The other thing is, I guess it's, you know, it's unfortunate that the state doesn't have a budget yet, but what we're seeing here is all these projects coming in under engineer's estimate, and the reason for that is because the state doesn't have a budget, so there's really not very much work going on out there, not like was forecasted. So we're seeing a lot of contractors that do normally larger state work that are having to survive, and they're getting into the smaller work, like what maybe we're talking about here or what have you, but anyway, it's being very competitive out there. So our engineer's estimate on this project here was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. I'd say our engineer's estimate was pretty accurate, because we have bids as high as three hundred and ninety-seven, all the way down to the two hundred and eighty-six thousand that we're talking about here, but yet, at the end of the day, I, you know, we're not saving money because we're spending money, but we are saving money, because it's coming in way under engineer's estimate, and the spread is very high from high, very large from high to low, and they're all qualified contractors, staff, you know, vets them out, they're all capable of doing it, or they wouldn't be making the recommendation, but at the end of the day, we're able to get more work done for less money, and a lot of it is because the state doesn't have a budget, and they're not awarding the work.
Well, as you know, the state has figured out a way to spend some money, you know, through MFT and through federal monies that have come in, so I'm, as I think I've already shared with you, I'm very pleased that two projects in Batavia have already been bid this year by the state, the Route thirty-one, one from Main Street down to Maple Avenue in North Aurora, and the one on the east side from Route, from Wilson Street north to North Avenue in St. Charles on Route twenty-five. Those are in the can and gonna be done, as I'm told by IDOT. So we're very pleased that we got that.
Yeah, I think we're very fortunate to get that, and there is work going on, don't get me wrong, there is some work going on, but there's just not the kind of work out there that the larger contractors thought they were gonna be able to see, and it's trickling down to our benefit.
Well, just as you say, you know, when I go into Chicago and my other responsibilities Well, just as you say, you know, when I go into Chicago and my other responsibilities in there, I get to see it right up close and personal, and IDOT's got a whole bunch of stuff they really want to do, but the money hasn't been locked in yet as to how they can do some of this stuff, so they have to spread it out on these types of projects that they can do, and be easily managed, and get the most for their buck off of it, and so, we're in the right place at the right time at this moment to get this work done, and speeding this up to get that area done there at Elm Street is really a, like you say, we're spending a lot of money, but at the end of the day, we're saving quite a bit by doing it this way. So, I want to thank our staff, too, for being on top of it and working with us to communicating with IDOT and whatever, to kind of understand how we're gonna do this, and how quickly we're gonna resolve to get this done, so, Gary and engineering staff and street employees, they've helped put this idea on the street. Okay, I guess we need a motion then for the approval of, I guess, Resolution seventeen dash seventy dash R.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Salvati. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Never mind. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Okay, moving to item twenty-two, our friends at Batavia Main Street are yet before us again tonight, with a request for a Class F liquor license for cocktails in the park. Any, somebody would care to make that motion? Alderman McFadden?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street, and waive the license fee.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Serone. Any discussion? Well, as long as we have the person here, Jamie, would you come up and give us a little take on what this is all going to be this year, the date, time?
Do that. I was hoping you'd invite me back up here. Uh, cocktails in the park this year is on July twenty-second. Um, as we've done in years past, we will have seven to eight downtown Batavia restaurants. We've already had plenty of them confirmed, including Gaetano's, and the Cream Marie did desserts last year, so we're welcoming them back, they were really excited to join us last year for the first time. Crosstown, who is outside of our downtown, will probably participate as well, but otherwise, it'll be mostly downtown Batavia restaurants. We'll have live entertainment, tickets are twenty-five dollars apiece, if you want to do our special raffle entry tickets, those are fifty dollars apiece, twenty-five dollars of that is for your entry, and the other twenty-five is a one-in-two-hundred chance to win twenty-five-hundred dollars, so, um, all of you around this table may have received an email from me just before this meeting, so all of you are invited to join us, and your ticket is on us, I included the link if you want to purchase a ticket for friends, family, anybody you want to invite to come with you. What else can I tell you about it? I don't know, I think that's it, this is our fourth, fifth year? For anybody know? Who's been there every year? Lots of you guys?
I would say maybe the sixth.
Is it the sixth there?
I think so.
You might be right.
Four times.
Oh, oh, anyway, um, we host it right behind City Hall here, which is what the mayor was talking about earlier, um, we call it Appleton Park, it hasn't been officially sanctioned that yet, but, um, it doesn't have a name, so we'd call it Appleton Park, because this was the Appleton Windmill Factory, um, and it's a beautiful space, as the mayor mentioned also, that many people haven't been to, so it's kind of cool to invite them back to that space, it has the little stage, just a beautiful evening in downtown Batavia, and it, um, all the funds raised go back into our programming, so, we have the opportunity to provide events like the farmer's market, and Bat Fest, and the Egg Hop, and Block Party, all events that are free to the public to enjoy in downtown, so this is one of our big fundraisers, so we appreciate you guys supporting that.
Alderman Salvati?
I know I'll be asked by some of my constituents, but will you have the cigar and Scotch tasting?
We will not, if anybody wants to join a committee to get that going as a separate event, we would love to entertain that, uh, we did do that one year, thank you, actually two years, uh, Mr. Salvati, and I know that some people around this table also participated in that, and it was awesome, and it just, you know, we have slowly started to, we, when we started the event, we kept adding little pieces to see what worked for this event, um, and what we've realized is that people really just want to come down to the park, enjoy a cocktail, eat some good food, listen to good music, and mingle with their friends, um, all together, so, we felt there were a little too many pieces that were pulling people away from each other, so, I, you, well, I mean, you can have a cigar in the park, it's totally fine, um, but, you know, we have, we have talked about possibly hosting a separate little gathering that would be great, so, no, then not this year, sorry, Alderman Salvati.
Are you selling tables this year, Jamie?
We are, so if you go onto the link that I put on the, um, on your email, which is on Eventbrite, um, but you can also find the link through our website at downtownbatavia.com, you'll see that there's the twenty-five dollar option, which is just the individual ticket, the fifty-dollar option, which I, like I said, is the raffle plus entry, uh, there's a hundred-dollar option that is to reserve yourself, um, a picnic table, so that seats comfortably six, but I've seen plenty more packed around those picnic tables, um, and then we also have picnic table packs, which include the, uh, for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, it's the picnic table, um, a bucket of beers or a bottle of wine, and six tickets, so that's shared with that group, so those are your different options, so, get your mind thinking about what kind of ticket you want to the event. Any other questions? No?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we need a vote on it?
Just need to vote.
Yeah, we need a vote on it. Kirk, call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Motion's approved, ten yes, no no's, four absent. Administrators report, Laura.
Good evening, I just wanted to update you on a few projects, um, one of those is one that's kind of coming to an end, and that's the construction of the Fabian Western Electric Transmission Line Project, um, our contractor out there, Hooper, I'd like to give them kudos for a project that went off with, pretty much without a hitch, um, the city crews will be performing switching to return the overall system back to its normal configuration, and landscape restoration and all the punch list work are scheduled to be finished by June ninth. Also, over at the wastewater treatment plant, demolition of the former administration building and maintenance garage over there is scheduled to commence mid-June, we've had a lot of inquiries about what's going on over there at Chamway and Flynn Street, and that's a major project that we have going on to update our wastewater treatment plans. And, uh, also want to let you know about a couple of personnel matters, the City of Batavia Fire Department has hired a new deputy chief, who is Chief Craig Hanson, who will be, um, here on June nineteenth to meet all of you, and, uh, he currently resides in Wasco, Illinois, he is, uh, previously the Assistant Chief of the Elburn Fire District from 2011 to present, he, before that, he was Battalion Chief for the St. Charles Fire Department for twenty-two years, and Shift Commander of the Geneva Fire Department for seven years, so he's very familiar with, uh, serving in administrative capacity for fire departments here in the Fox Valley, um, he also has his MBA from Benedictine University, and his Bachelor of Science degree in industrial safety from Northern Illinois University, so we're really excited to have him join our team at the Fire Department. I also wanted to say, uh, congratulations to a couple of promotions that were announced today in the Engineering Department, um, as you know, when Rahab Bari was promoted to the Engineering Manager position, that opened up the Assistant Manager position, and we had some external candidates, but we also had an internal candidate, Andrea Pedraza, and she rose to the top, and we really like to see this, to be able to promote from within. In addition to that promotion, also, um, Tim Grimm is being promoted from Engineer to Senior Engineer, so we wish to congratulate them both, and happy to see them take further steps in their career. We've talked a lot tonight about River Street, and we've been doing some work on the wooden arch that is the lead into North River Street, and gave that a nice cleaning and a polish, and as well, take care of the wooden part of that structure as well, we were doing some staining and sealing today on that, so, put a nice bright new finish on that for all those lovely farmer's market and events that we plan to have there this summer. Also, I wanted to let you know that the Finance Department has been working on some additional summary reports that you will see, um, added to the monthly financial reports, beginning with the April Monthly Financial Report, uh, which will be on the June thirteenth committee of the whole, um, meeting. And, just to let everybody know when those brush collection dates are, the next one is June twelfth for the east side, and June nineteenth for the west side, and you want to make sure that you have all your items out there by the curb at seven o'clock AM on Monday of the week for your pickup. Uh, is there any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, committee reports, uh, Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor, um, tomorrow evening, CDC will actually start in this room at six-thirty, and, but prior to that, there's gonna be ribbon cutting out at the Deerpath Road Bridge on Deerpath Road just south of Main Street at six o'clock.
At six o'clock, I believe.
Yep.
Or at six o'clock to cut the Deerpath Road Bridge, isn't it?
That's correct, the, uh, there will be, the ribbon cutting ceremony will start promptly at six.
Right, so we'll start out there at six o'clock, but then we'll actually convene the meeting here for the committee of the whole at six-thirty, and then we'll take a walk, we'll do another one of the mayor's walks.
Yeah, we're gonna do two things tomorrow night, we're gonna go over to the Depot Museum, and the Historical Society Board is going to be there with their, with the staff from the museum, and they're gonna put on a very brief presentation to us, I think outside, of what they plan to do with building an addition onto the Depot Museum, and then they also have now the idea of building a welcome visitor center that will be kind of the building that will join the old museum with the new museum, and they want to go over with us and show us what we got in mind, and it's gonna be right here on the riverbank, right next to the north of the existing, then following that, I've got an arrangement with, uh, Bob Riley to let us go into one of the nicer, you, there's one unit left in Corey Stone that has not yet been occupied, and he's gonna open that up for us, so that, some of you have told me you've never been into that building and seen what that's like inside, so, I thought it was a good opportunity for us to do this. Now, I'm thinking, between these two activities, this could probably take the better part of an hour or so, and, you know, we do have some other stuff we need to get, so I didn't, we talked one time about taking into River Rain, we'll still do that, but I'm gonna delay doing that till another time, uh, Laura and I have been talking about some other ideas, we really like this walking on committee nights, because I think it gets you out into the field, and lets you see right up close and personal what some of this stuff is all about, so, we've got some other ideas of some stuff that really needs to have some review by all of you of what's happening, so, be prepared to do a few more walks before the summer's over.
Okay, so after we do the museum presentation and the Corey Stone walkthrough, we'll come back here, we'll start the, we'll continue with the meeting, the regular agenda, on our agenda are probably four or five items, one of them would be the approving and the authorization of the acquisition of real property, extinguishing the driveway easement benefiting one-on-nine East Wilson Street, and then we have the awarding of the task order to Allen Pepper Architects for the Government Center Interior Space Planning, we also have authorizing the execution of Task Order Number Six with WBK Engineering LLC for the North Dam Signage and Lighting Plan, and then we have, lastly, the authorizing execution of a contract with Carl Walker Incorporated in the amount of forty-six thousand to provide parking, um, consulting services for the One Washington Place, and as Gary mentioned, uh, as we all know, that's gonna be a two-story underground parking, more or less garage underneath those apartments that will be the City of Batavia's at one point in time here very shortly, and in order to make sure that we are getting what we want and building what we need, that'll be something that'll last for many and many years, Gary and his staff felt as though that we needed to get a consultant in here that specialized in that, because they just really honestly don't have a lot of experience in parking garages, so, I think it's a great idea, so that's what he's bringing to the committee tomorrow night for consideration. And then, we will have a Plan Commission meeting the next night, uh, that'll be the seventh of June at seven o'clock, a few items on their agenda are some rezoning of some parcels around town, the signs have been up for quite a few weeks now, was gonna happen a couple weeks ago, got pushed back to tomorrow night, simply a matter of housekeeping, a lot of low-retention ponds that are going from residential to parks and open space, and a small parcel on Randall Road that's gonna go, I believe, from, what was that, Scott, it's going to, um...
The default R zero to a general commercial, so the, it matches the surrounding property.
Yeah, so that's kind of all just housekeeping things, um, and then also is the, um, final plan, or the, um, plan review of the landscaping amendment to the Dunkin' Donuts slash Shell Station right up the road here, and that's about it for the Plan Commission for tomorrow evening, the, um, Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet this coming Monday at five-thirty, and that's all I have.
Very good, any questions? All right, Services, Alderman Wolf?
Alderman Brown took care of the two things I had on the agenda. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Government Services, Alderman McFadden?
Uh, Laura touched on this, regarding the June thirteenth COW, the updates to the April Financial Report, as well as the update on, uh, the investment policy, and at the COW tomorrow night, we'll be undertaking the exciting business of approving the 2018 calendar of meetings. And that's all I have.
Public Utilities, Alderman?
Uh, nothing to report, your honor.
Okay. We have other business? Alderman Callahan?
We have the fireworks ice cream social fundraiser with Flag Day this weekend, uh, there's going to be, the community band's going to be out there, there's going to be ice cream sales, food sales, raffles, and the Holling Down Houston Derby Race, there's going to be, uh, people that have paid for an entry to actually race their cars, and the Official Derby Association is going to lend us some cars to, where you can pay for rides to go down the hill.
So let me expand on that a little bit, uh, it's gonna be Sunday afternoon, and I would suggest anytime between about two and six, you can come down here and find things going on, uh, community band will be playing, as well as, I think, some groups from Batavia High School, and the Ice Cream Social will be going on, and I'm led to believe that some of the council members have volunteered to scoop on that, that afternoon.
And quality control.
What?
And quality control.
And quality control. And so, that will be on, and, uh, I just think it's a really fun time, this will be the hundred and first anniversary of American Flag Day this year, and as you know, some of that was somewhat thought up and created in Batavia by Dr. Bernard J. Segren back in nineteen sixteen, which we had the celebration last year, it was the one-hundredth birthday, now it's the hundred and first, and so, it's just kind of a part of our history that's kind of special to Batavia, and speaks to some of this kind of unique ambiance that we have, that we carry as a community, and, uh, we're gonna do just a little brief presentation about Dr. Segren, but, I've had people ask me, Alderman Callahan, if they really want to come down and see Holling Down Houston, what would be the prime times to see the real action of the cars rolling down the road?
Well, we will be, the actual race itself will be between three and four.
Okay.
But as soon as the roads close down at twelve, and the cars get here, we'll be letting people take as many rides as possible, before the, there's going to be a parade that will start across the street at the new parking lot.
At two.
At two, that will come across the bridge, uh, the Peace Bridge over into, uh, the area that will kick off the official ceremonies, but if people wanted to come down and ride anytime before then, uh, if we're all set up and ready to go, we won't turn anybody's money away.
Now, the parade is one of these that other towns have done, where anybody that wants to parade is invited to come on down and show us their patriotism, and they're encouraging people to dress in red, white, and blue, and we've got some school, younger children groups, and we've got some scout groups, and I think we have a few adults that are daring enough to want to get into this, and, uh, we're gonna have, uh, some, we're gonna be playing music on River Street, but they're gonna make their own music till we get them on the bridge, and then they're gonna have this music over here at the Pegbon Center take over, so they can parade into the area, uh, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be one of those events, it'll be loaded with grandparents standing there with picture, cameras to take pictures of things, and so, hopefully, it's everything that they've tried to put it together, there's been a lot of time and effort put into trying to plan this, and the last couple of years that this has been done, it has turned out to be a fairly significant fundraiser for the Fourth of July fireworks, and additionally, there's, some of the money is being directed toward the idea of constructing the permanent Flag Day Memorial in downtown Batavia, and that was, that's been, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder here, but they have gotten some pretty healthy contributions toward that idea, and so, there's some stuff that's brewing there that I think will be even bigger, grander and greater in Batavia in the days to come, and, uh, this is what, this is the second year we've done the Holling Down Houston, or?
Second year.
Second year, so, uh, I think when people come down and see it, it kind of taps their youth, and a lot of people then say, well, I think I'll, maybe I'll bring my kid down, we'll make a car and come down and be in this next year, I think, I believe they've asked us to loan them eighty cones to put at the bottom of the street, so if anybody's car gets away from them, uh, they'll crash into the plastic cones, and supposedly, they'll stop you in a real hurry, because you gotta go up over those things, and it, you don't go very far once you get into a field of cones.
And since we know how fast they were going last year, we know it's not going to be anything super crazy, but to your point about the, um, the money-making for the, for the Flag Day Memorial itself, um, I'm on the non-for-profit with Austin and Mrs. Shelkey, and Representative Steve Austin, and former Batavia Commander Eddie Perez, and, uh, there will be more upcoming information, but as of right now... But as of right now, we have a donation from one party that is over $100,000. So we are in line for possibly another one of that sort. So this is looking like it will be a very good amount to start the progress on that.
And one of these nights, one of these infamous walks I got you all on, is probably going to have to dedicate itself to where it is we're going to put this memorial.
Mm-hmm.
So yet to be decided fully, but we're going to have you walking to look at sights, I think, on that, fairly quick. I can't think of anything else that day that we should be touching on here as far as Sunday.
It just bring your money. There's going to be the flags for the 101st. And if you say you don't have cash, there will be squares.
There was a contest going on about paint Batavia red, white, and blue. And if you agree to do that, we give you a really nice sign that you put in your yard. And then there's going to be a panel of judges driving around Batavia deciding who are the top ones. And there are prizes for those who do it. And we've already had a number of people who have, some merchants in downtown have windows displayed now with red, white, and blue. And we've got several places I've seen. Out at Wilson and Van Ortrick, there's one. There's a nice window over here on, right next to Limestone at Sophistications. There's some patriotism raising its head here pretty good, so.
And if I could, on the second part of all that patriotism that is going on, I didn't attend the River Street, because I was over in the Batavia West Cemetery with some of the scout groups and just average citizens who came out to help clean some of our Batavia veterans that have served in the Civil War in the West Cemetery. And what happens for that is the, there's a hereditary organization that relatives of anyone who was a Union Veteran does the research and finds those graves that are marked that need cleaning and for headstones that were never placed for some of our veterans. And the SUVCW coordinates with local scouts who are attaining their Eagle status. And this year, the project for the West Cemetery was Asher Hendrickson. And over in Batavia East is going to be Eli Borden on the 24th. And then on the 17th, I believe there's one troop from North Aurora that's also going to be doing and installing some new graves. And the headstones, they actually come from, they're ordered through the VFW, or for the Department of Veterans Affairs. These things are over 130, 140 pounds. And the students themselves, our Batavia students, dig out the headstone area to meet official standards and replace them. And one of the graves, the headstones that was put in, the soldier was killed August 15th, 1863. So it was the first time in 153 years that we honored one of the veterans that was out there. And so I thought that was actually amazing. And to see them out there without complaining and paying, they had all their friends come out. And residents that did come out, I know former Alderman Kevin Botterman and his wife came out, and some other residents just came out just to help, even though it was a scout project. But all the kids that were out there showed nothing but the utmost respect of what was going on. They were learning things. They were talking about, one of them was cleaning Don Carlos Newton's headstone, and they were talking about that and what that was with the Newton wagon factory. So that was just, it was just amazing to actually see that, that they showed that much interest in it. And it was a very proud moment.
And one other thing I can think of is that the flag source, our flag manufacturing company out in Industrial Park has been very cooperative and has provided us with some flags that we're going to be able to sell to residents who would like to have a nice flag. It'll have a commemorative certificate saying it was bought in Batavia on the 101st anniversary of American Flag Day. And that'll be, some of that, again, is a fundraiser for the events that we're talking about here. So we continue to move in small steps, but I think we're very positive in trying to create, you know, certainly a legacy of the American flag and its deep historical relationship to the Batavia community. Again, something that nobody else around the other communities around here cannot talk about it like we can, because we got the history. So very proud of that fact. Anybody else in the council? Okay, I've been doing a lot of talking tonight. I'm getting tired of it. Tired of listening to myself. I just want to share that Wednesday morning at 8:00 a.m., I'd like to invite any of you who want to get up and come with me, that we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the Jewel Grocery Store on Randall Road. This will be their third ribbon cutting, their third grand opening. And this is the third time they've renditioned themselves into a new store. And it's interesting to see how they've kind of changed their life a little bit every time. But they are going to have a grand opening at 8:00 a.m., and I'm cutting a ribbon out there. So if anybody wants to come with me. And then this coming Friday night, the 9th, at 6:00 out at the Cougar Stadium, it's the annual American Cancer Society Walk out there, where you walk around the track for several hours and raise money as a volunteer. And they generally have an opening ceremony, which I'm going to participate in on Sunday night, or excuse me, Friday night. And so if anybody has a passion for that, that'll be going on this coming Friday night, starting about 6:00. And then I just want to share a couple of observations. Today, we had the funeral of Philip Elstrom. And he was one who had a very intricate involvement in this town, and specifically back when this property was acquired by the city. And I got to do the eulogy to his funeral today. And I told the story about how he was elected nobody at the time, but he was dating the then-chairman of the Batavia Plan Commission. And he came up, I think largely, with the idea that maybe the City of Batavia should look at this property, this building, and all these other buildings that were next to it here, and that if we really wanted to do something unique with our city hall, that we ought to buy all this. So I give him a lot of the credit for stirring this up. And as I said, you know, at the time he did it, and as it was, when it was finally accomplished, Alderman Brown's father was the mayor of Batavia. And at the time it was done, the City of Batavia bought 15 acres of ground here. That included the Depot Pond and this building and another building that has since been tore down. And there was 251,000 square feet of building space here, much, some of which has been removed. But because of the land that we acquired, number one, we were able to put ourselves into this building as a city hall and police station at a price that today, to replicate these facilities, would be many, many millions of dollars. But the fact that it is centrally located to both sides of the community, I think, is important. But more interestingly, we got all this additional room here. And from this additional room, we've been able to do such things as build the River Walk. We've been able to build River Rain Retirement Center. We've been able to build the Peg Bond Center. And we've been able to build the Depot Museum site. And so all this was all kind of put together because of, I will credit Mr. Elstrom with a lot of the vision that put all this into motion. And Alderman Brown's father was the mayor, and he's the one that took the political flak for it. Because I got to tell you, I was the newspaper reporter then covering it. And personally, I wasn't supportive of what was going on here. But poor Mayor Brown took a fair share of opposition from people that said, this is the ruination of us all. This is the worst thing that ever happened. Batavia, downtown Batavia is going to crash and burn. It was, every manageable horror story you can imagine was being out there shot around. And the guys that did it really had some, they were profiles in courage, and they had some stamina to stand up for it. But I will give Phil Elstrom a lot of the vision that kind of wrapped this whole thing together. And in his later days, when he'd come for a ride, and I used to go get him every now, the first place he wanted to come was just come down here and ride through all the areas, River Rain and this place and the River Walk, and see everything that had happened. Because I could show you pictures of what it looked like before all this was done. And Batavia was a much lesser town because that, before that was put together. So it's been interesting to me, and we're about to have some more happen here. But every year, Batavia High School has class reunions of people. And many of them that graduated from Batavia High School 50 years ago are about my age. And so the last few years, now my 50th reunion is this year. But the last few years, there's been classes that preceded me that have come down to have their 50th reunion. And I am struck by the number of people that come back here after having lived in the town 50 years ago and come back. And inevitably, they're talking about making you feel good. They say, my goodness gracious, what have you done here? This really didn't look like this, or you didn't have any of this going when we were living here. And a lot of it, again, belongs to the credit of Alderman Brown's father. But I mean, the fact that all this was done with foresight and vision. And so sometimes when we get shot at because we are doing something that people think is radical or out of way, there's some, there's some living examples here right now of things that people did that were highly questioned, that now I think people think, well, it wasn't really a bad idea. So we need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of emergency real estate.
Actually, don't. We don't have to have it.
We don't need that?
No.
Okay. So we just want to have a motion to adjourn that?
We'll move. Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Salvati. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.